Hello and good evening. My name is Kristen Rogers. I am the Chair. Sorry, just once. Sorry. Sorry about that. I am the Chair of the Harwood Unified Union School District. Thank you for joining us. We start each meeting with public comment. Anyone from the public can speak on a school-related matter they would like to. Each speaker is given up to three minutes. Usually, we are able to hear from everybody that would like to speak. If for some reason there are more speakers than time allows, I'll draw names. At the two and a half minute mark, I will let you know you have thirty seconds left. And at the three-minute mark, I will let you know your time is up so we can go on to the next speaker. If you have more to share with us than three minutes allows, we invite you to email the entire board at C E N dash H U S D board at H U S D dot org. Please know that while the board does not respond during public comment, we do always listen carefully what is being said. If you are on Zoom and would like to speak, please click on the raised hand button now. Going to give it just a minute. There isn't anybody in the audience here. And I am not seeing any attendees I would like to speak, so we are going to go ahead and move on. So we are going, I would like to amend the agenda because to move the action items up on the agenda because Tommy Young is here and would be available to answer any questions about the girls' basketball trip that we are going to be approving tonight. So I do have some recommended language to move the action items up to in front of school board recognition month and to move the basketball trip as the first item under action items. If anybody would like to make that motion to amend the agenda, Lisa, you would, is there a second? Lots of seconds. Any discussion? Okay. Is there any objection to approving the amendment? And if there is on Zoom, just yell out. Okay, not seeing any or hearing any, that will pass. So now we're going to approve the agenda with those changes. So I would be looking for the emotion to approve the agenda with. Okay, is there a second? Any discussion? Okay, any objection to approving the agenda with those additions? Okay, that will pass then. So we will go ahead and move on to action items. And then so the first action item will be to approve the school, the girls' basketball trip to Croatia and Serbia. So I would just be looking for a motion for that. And I think we have some language too. Jake, did you want to?
I motioned to approve the girls' basketball trip to Croatia and Serbia, April eighteenth through twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second? Sorry. Okay, discussion, questions? Yes, Tom, if you want to sit up at the table, it's totally fine. Questions or comments or anything?
Can you tell us a little bit about what the girls will be doing?
Well, sorry. We'll be doing a cultural and basketball exchange. It's youth leadership through sports. In two thousand and nineteen, I got to take a Harvard group to the Ukraine. And we did historical stuff, visited camps, like children's camps, did a lot of basketball clinics, just traveled through Ukraine, kind of experiencing a lot of the different cultural aspects of the country. And then participated in some tournaments. There was three-on-three for that year. This year's trip would be five-on-five with all the same type of stuff. It's true, connection with Project Harmony and youth leadership and sports.
Go ahead, Mike.
I just wanted to make a note for the public record that we generally ask for approval a year prior for the trip, for international trips. This was a last-minute offer. And in speaking with Tommy and his building principal and the Harwood principals, we decided, especially since it was organized through Project Harmony, all the arrangements were made, the costs were covered, that it would be something that would be worthy of an exception so that our students didn't miss out on the opportunity. And I want to thank, first of all, congratulate Mr. Coach Jones on a very successful night last night, but also thank him for all of his extra efforts to make this trip a possibility for our students.
It wasn't sure because you're hitting it. Did you have a question?
Question is for actually the superintendent. You said usually you had mentioned that usually it takes a year or you want your request. Can you just talk a little bit about what that's for? And are we not looking at something? Are we speeding something up that may be not safe or whatever?
It's a really good question. And Coach Jones's principal, Kayak Corb, was the one who worked to develop the procedures with the previous superintendent. And just because of the nature of an overseas trip, passports, fundraising, and all the other logistical pieces, it was felt that it really should be something that's planned in advance, raising money, coordinating with students, finding students who are interested. But this passed a lot of the bar of those areas that did not require all that additional work. The students are predetermined. The fundraising has already been done and logistical arrangements are actually through Project Harmony, which is a local organization and a well-respected organization now in Vermont, started by, among other people, one of our retired Harvard teachers.
Does anybody have questions before Ash- Ashley were to go again? Just, I mean, you can, but I just want to double check before. Okay, go ahead, Ashley.
So if Project Harmony is in charge of it, are we sending chaperones with you from the group that, from your students or their parents, or who are the chaperones for the trip?
It'll be myself, my assistant coach Greg Titus. My other assistant can't go because she had been on Ukraine trip, and it's all one and done so that they spread the opportunity. They gave a waiver for head coaches. And I also asked my G V coach Bethany Fuller, because I wanted a female on the trip because there's things that come up that girls run it up to a female about than a male about. I want to respect that. We'll also have the leader from Project Harmony, Tracy Guyon, who was a former student of mine as a first and second grader, as a head, and then someone from Y L S as well.
I just want to make sure I'm not missing anybody on Zoom land that might have, or Zoom that might have questions. So make sure just you can yell out or whatever to get my attention. Anybody else with questions or comments? For Coach Young? Bobby?
I just think it's great that you're doing this, and I think the students who get to go are very lucky.
Global education is a big thing. I'm going to actually run a fellowship out of DC that mentors teachers. They go on something. This year, my group's going to South African ball in July. So I've been doing that for a few years now, and I've been part of some collaborations of books written on global education. So we take, I take it, it won't just be the trip. It's going to be what people can offer after. An example now is when we went to the Ukraine, we played three-on-three, which is was vague over there, and it's become an Olympic sport. And now we have a three-on-three league that we do in the spring that the girls run themselves because there's no coaches. And so it's nice to bring things back that they learned, and we're sharing it with other schools, come and join, and we do it in the spring. It's a lot of fun.
You think it would be possible that whenever you guys are back, maybe in May, you and a couple of the players could come and just tell us about how the trip went. And if you have pictures or anything, they could share with us. Would that be possible? If there aren't any questions or other questions or comments, we'll go ahead and vote. Okay. Jeswin, would you like to vote? Okay. Maisy? Maisy's a yes. Dylan? Dylan's a yes. Naomi is on her trip to, is it Rwanda, right? Ashley? Bobby?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Cindy? Is not here. Jonathan?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Marlena?
Yes.
Life? Tori?
Yes.
Kim is all, is absent today. Mike?
Yes.
And that will pass. I'm going to go ahead and vote yes, too. You're very welcome. We look for, good luck with the travel, and we look forward to hearing all about it when you guys get back. For Zoom people, he said he was going to post things on the Athletic Facebook page. Is that Athletic Facebook page? Okay. Thank you. Okay, so our next action item is going to approve for warning Title One policy. So I would be, we have suggested language, and I'd be looking for a motion for that. Would anybody like to make that motion? Tori?
I move to approve this.
Is there a second, Ashley, say? Discussion or questions or want, anybody want more detail? I know I did a, we did a little bit of a blurb write up in the leadership report. Does anybody have any questions? Or just want further clarification? No? Shannon, do you want to just do a quick blurb on it? So so what she's saying for people on Zoom, that it is required and that the blurb in the leadership report gives you the idea of what it's about, but she is here and it will, is available to answer any questions if anybody has any. Everybody feel ready to vote? Do they need just another second? Do another minute? Okay. We will go ahead. Is there any objection to approving the Title One policy for warning? Okay, not seeing any or hearing any, that will pass without objection. Okay, so moving right along. The last action item is to adopt the superintendent evaluation form. So I'd be looking for a motion.
I move that we adopt the superintendent evaluation form.
Is there a second? Jake, sorry. Discussion. So everybody should have kind of gotten a sampling of that or been able to look through it. So Bobby, did you go ahead?
I just had one question because I was doing it. The very first question was short answer, but it didn't have the check circles. And then when I went through and did the rest of it, it did. So I just wanted to, I don't know, I would, maybe it was something I did wrong, but I wondered about it.
That might be a Lisa question. She's just pulling it up. Second.
And that to your attention in case it wasn't working right.
Yeah, so what's linked on the agenda is just the outline of what we had approved at the last meeting. And then I sent everybody a link in an email. I believe it was a couple weeks ago. Yeah.
Sorry, Bobby, if you can let me know what specifically you're looking at, maybe I can help. The first page in it, it's possible, it just didn't, I mean, I'm not sure. So the first page that you get to is a short answer for your name and then a checklist for your role. If you fill that in, and then go to the next, it's a question with, with checkboxes. So it might have just been something that you were looking at that was confusing. I don't think there's a mistake there. But if anyone else sees it, let me know.
Any other questions? If you, do people feel comfortable? Going ahead, sorry. Going ahead and voting? Okay. So we will go ahead and vote. Is there any objection to adopting the superintendent evaluation form? Oh, we'll do a roll call. Yes, okay, Jeswin. Jeswin's a yes. Maisy? Maisy's a yes. Dylan? Dylan's a thumbs up, yes. Naomi's not here. Ashley? Ashley is a yes, thumbs up. Bobby? Bobby's a yes. Christine?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Marlena?
Yes.
Life?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
Mike? Kelly? Okay, so that will pass. So everybody be on the lookout email tomorrow for that form. Perfect. Okay, so that was it for action items. So we're next going to go to school board recognition month.
Thank you. The legislature has declared February as Vermont School Board Recognition Month. So I wanted to take a few minutes to recognize the work of our board. And I've had the privilege to work with the school board directly for fourteen years. I also was, as shared with Kristen and Kelly, that my father ran for the school board fifty years ago this year in nineteen seventy-three, when I was a young four-year-old and was on the board for many years. So I got to see firsthand growing up the, the hard work. And we know that school board members don't run for fame or recognition, and certainly not for financial compensation. So I'm going to take a few minutes and recognize everyone, first with a certificate from the Vermont School Boards Association. So Lisa will pass those out. This is a copy of Marlena's certificate. And then in considering, as the district considered something we wanted to do to recognize each of you, we, you know, had some discussion to decide that T-shirts and trinkets and certificates usually get filed away and forgotten. But the reason many school board members run is to make life better for our students. So what we thought we would do, and we reached out to our school librarians and ask each of our school librarians to choose a book for each of their town's school board members. So what I'd like to do tonight is present each of you with a book that you can do one of three things. You can, you can hand back the book to me tonight, and we'll make sure it gets to the librarian. Or you can, I can, I can, or you can connect yourself with the school principal and deliver it yourself to the school. Or if you want to take a look at it and bring it back to the next meeting and have us deliver it, we can do that as well. I know at least have one person who's there daily. So I would think Christine would probably deliver her book. But I'll just take a few seconds. The, the book is from your town, and for Life and Cindy from Ducksbury, we chose Cross at Brook Middle School. So those librarians chose books that they thought would honor you, but also would, would honor the students in the school. So I'll just do some of them I've read through, some of them I haven't, but we tried to do a good job of matching them. The first one's for Life. It's called Take Back the Block. It's about a young man who lives in a neighborhood where a developer has decided to essentially buy out the neighborhood. And the young man becomes an advocate and a community organizer to take back his block. So I thought that was appropriate for Life. For Cindy, who is not here, we looked for something that was biking, since she's on her biking trip now, but we found something called Beyond Possible, which is about one man, fourteen peaks and mountaineering. So we'll make sure she gets that. For Jonathan, for the Warren Library, and since especially, I know there's a child at the Warren Library, so I thought we, we could certainly get this to you if you'd like to deliver this yourself. But it's a book, beautiful illustrations, an animated story called The Boy, The Mole, The Fox, and the Horse. And it talks about the, the concept that home isn't always a place. For Ashley, we have one, and you'll have to bear with me for a minute. It's called The Gift of Nothing. And when you read the story, it's about what do you get somebody who has all those essential things in life already, you know, family, home, relationships, and the, you can read through, but the decision was nothing other than the relationship between that, the gift giver and the recipient. I'm going to pass that down. And I'll also point out that that in each of the books, there is a dedication plate that says, so the next one is called A Library. We thought this was appropriate for Christine, who works, helps us out in the school. There's a plaque that says donated in honor of Christine Sullivan, school board member Waitsfield, twenty twenty-three. And it's about a library, and the discussion of the library is just, isn't just a home for books. It's a haven for dreams, imaginations, and all those things that we hope our children will dream and think towards. For Bobby, we have a book called Nigel and the Moon. And again, it's about a boy who is a dreamer and looking towards his future. For the Fiston Library, and for Mike, knowing that there is, there is a politician in his family and somebody who's run for office, we have something that we thought would be a fond read in his family called Sofia Valdez's Future Prez. And I did not know that piece, or I forgot that piece. And for Kim, who is not with us tonight, a book called Amara and the Bats. For Kelly, and I'll let her look through this, and she can share what this is about, but it's called The Rock From the Sky. And for Marlena, who was at home, a book called, another one of my favorites, All Because You Matter, and it is a love story for Black and Brown children. She's, she's online. We can sit it there. For Tori, so, so we are on the Brookside. We are on the Brookside, obviously. For Tori, something called Ambitious Girl, which is another fun read. And Jake, one of our newest board members, a, another prize winner, called from the Cotticot medalist Jason Chin, called Your Place in the Universe.
Lisa's busy delivering.
And again, knowing Lisa's business, we thought that a big mooncake for a little star was a good choice as well. Another, all the, all the librarians did a wonderful job of picking out the beautiful books. And then finally, Kristen, Farmhouse, which is a book about a young girl who lives in the farmhouse that has a tremendous history, a long history of people in that home. So this is for you. So thank you for your service, and we hope this is a small appreciation, a token of appreciation for all the work you do and the, the true meaning of why we serve in the board, and that's to give back to our students.
Wow, thank you. This is like, I don't have words. This is really, really, really nice. This is thoughtful. Wow, thank you so much. Okay. Sorry, that just is, it's really great. Okay. Yeah, we want to read.
And we, we just have a few people missing, so I'll make sure that Jonathan, Marlena, and Cindy receive their books and Kim as well. We'll get them to you so you can have them in hand.
Did anybody want to say anything before we move on?
Yeah, thank you. You can return it, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the superintendent report, which was in your, which was the hyperlink on the agenda. If anybody had any questions for Dr. Mike, he's available to answer any questions. Mike, did you, I don't know if you want to hit upon any of your highlights of anything?
Just, just that just that in the next meeting is the organizational meeting, but then after that, we'll have a quarterly report where we'll, we'll start to talk about some of the goals we had for this year, developing some plans for the future.
Mike, did you have a question?
I did. I just wanted to ask a question about the bus contract. It's saying they agreed to a one-year extension. What, what was the contract for originally? And also, are we worried about future extensions? Or is that something? I know we've had trouble with the buses, so I was just curious about what the future looks like.
We, the, the current contract, at least I can pull up the current contract, allowed for two one-year extensions. What, what the market is seeing right now is inflation greater than three percent Vermont law prohibits the amount that a contract, contract extension can be to three percent. So in analyzing it and in the current climate, we think that it makes sense for us just having talked to a number of superintendents, some who we use for a student, some who don't. Other schools are seeing some of the same challenges, which is mainly due to staffing. I had said that I was working on a C D L, and I can tell you, just getting drivers is a very extensive process in addition to a physical, that falls under the U.S. Department of Transportation requirements. There's a full Vermont one-day seminar, and then you have to do forty hours behind-the-wheel training with somebody from that company before you can even take your test. So we've been doing a lot of work. Unfortunately, we've had some circumstances that have allowed us to to advertise and beg for people to get their C D L and to be bus drivers, but it is just very challenging right now. So I think, I think we're fortunate that our, our increase is limited to three percent. And I asked Lisa if there's anything she wants to add to that. This is mainly her area that she's been working on.
Actually, is very good. I was speaking to other districts, and they recently went out to bid, and they were see, seeing seven, seven and a half, eight percent increases in transportation costs. So having that limit of three percent, and it took Increases in transportation costs. So having that limit of three percent and it took a while for, for a student to come back to see if they can even do that. And they were able to do that across the board. And I can share the contract with you in the, you know, from the last contract, but we have. Up to two one-year extensions, but cannot exceed three percent. Any other questions, comments? Go ahead, Jake.
I'm wondering about the, so the Central Vermont Career Center representative, that's somebody from this board, right? That would. Oh, it's already happened.
Well, so, so Jonathan Young, it's a one-year term. And then that, that person will be appointed at the reorganization or elected or at the reorganization meeting. So we have a rep that represents the Harwood District.
Yeah.
On that. Am I missing anything, Jonathan?
No, that's, that's it.
And it, it is Jonathan? Is that the idea? Oh, and we'll just talk about that on March fifteenth. Is that the idea?
Yeah. So the plan would be is that when that comes up, I had already asked Jonathan to just kind of give a little blurb about what it is.
Okay.
So, so last year, we didn't, we didn't elect that person at the reorganization meeting. It was like a couple of meetings after that, but we're trying to just. Streamline that.
Okay. Makes sense.
Any other questions? For Dr. Mike? Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to our discussion item, which is. Presentation by our lead school nurse, Allison. So she has her presentation. And then we've allotted twenty minutes for questions. So I'm gonna hand it over to her.
All right. Well, thank you all for allowing me to come and just share a little bit about the school nurse leader role. Harwood is one of eleven school districts in the state who received a grant from the Vermont Department of Health this year to. Increase nurse leadership across the state to develop school nurse leaders. So I just want to share a little bit about that. I don't know if the presentation will come up so that everyone can see. So I appreciate you just giving me some time to talk about that and we'll welcome your questions at the end. So the second slide that I have there is this wonderful graphic that was developed a few years ago by the professional organization, the National Association of School Nurses to kind of. Give you a picture of what school nursing is like. I don't know if any of you would like to reflect on your time in elementary, middle or high school, but. What I remember the most about my experience in school with my school nurses being a seventh grader, going through many changes. And being told that I had to start wearing glasses. School nursing is way much more at this point, I think, than screenings and Band-Aids and, and ice packs. So. This kind of just gives you a little bit, we'll talk a, a bit more about each of these principles on the next slide. But you can see here that the student, their family and the community is at the center of all that we do. We'll hit to the next one. So these are kind of the principles, standards of practice, care coordination, leadership, which is what our grant is focusing on. Quality improvement and community and public health roles. There's about fifty different things listed down here that encompasses all of what we do. On any given day, I would say we're engaging in about half of these, these pieces. So I won't read them all to you, but just some, a couple of highlights. Under the standards of practice, Vermont has a, a school health services manual that guides a lot of our decision-making. That we can refer to. Care coordination, I think, is where we spend a lot of our time. Direct care is part of that. And I'll show you a slot in a little bit. If you didn't take a look at it when you had the packet that demonstrates quite a bit of the direct care that we provide on a daily basis. But also under that falls with consulting with special education and on IEPs and five oh four plans and. Just having Tommy here was making me think about planning for field trips. So all of those students who go on field trips, there might be many of those who have medical needs and. The nurse is a big part of planning and making sure that the students are safe when they're outside of our, our building too. Leadership, we are doing a lot of collaboration across the district and then with community providers and then with other school nurse leaders across the state. We have a professional learning collaborative with those eleven school districts who receive the grant. So we're getting together about every other month and sharing ideas. And then working on a collaborative plan that we can come back the next time and continue to build upon that will benefit, I think, nurses and schools across the state. Systems levels, leadership is kind of what I'll talk a bit more. I think that, see that as my role for the remainder of the school year is kind of looking at big systems. What can we do to improve and empower all the other nurses as leaders too? Quali improvement, one of the, the great things that our school district has that many don't is an electronic health record. That's part of our budget every year. So we can document everything that comes through our office and we can run all sorts of data on that. So that we can, you know, see some areas that might need a bit more focus. At Brookside, a few years ago, I presented data that we were able to run for that. Through that electronic health record. And then the teachers kind of came up with some ideas on how we could reduce some of that direct care. Manage some things in the classroom so that kids were in the, in the class and learning. And then community and public health, just it talks about our engagement with the community at large and we'll kind of talk about a few of those pieces as we move forward. The next slide shares a little bit about the Vermont Department of Health, school priorities for this year. So. They're wanting to empower school nurses and leadership, focus on mental health support, sexual and reproductive health, vaping and substance use. Naloxone or Narcan and then communication with medical homes that includes dentists as well. So our, our grant is specifically targeting this leadership, but mix and all of that are, are reaching some of these priorities too. So the grant itself, we were awarded seventy-nine thousand dollars to improve. School nursing and school nurse leaders across the district. So the, some of the things that we're focusing on are individuals, professional development. One of those pieces includes school nurse certification. Our district has nine full-time nurses right now. Two of us are already certified as nationally board certified school nurses. We have six additional nurses that are eligible to take that exam and five of them have chosen to do so because of the grant. So. We're really excited about that. We've already held some study groups and five of those nurses are sitting for that board test in March. So. We're excited hopefully to say that we'll have, let's be seven nurses out of the nine that are board certified by the end of the school year, which is wonderful. Some of the community collaboration that we're working on is consulting with some providers. Around standing orders. There's some standing orders that Dr. Levine has provided for the state. For a while and I'm not sure that that's going to continue. So we're working to collaborate with some local providers who might be able to be a resource for us in the future for that. And then we want to make sure that we encourage all school nurses as leaders. So this grant was not really to just have one school nurse leader and, and provide some development for them. But to make sure that all of nine of us are accessing leadership opportunities and building ourselves as leaders. So part of my, my engagement with the nurses across the district, I visited all of the schools. I've been doing three days a week as a school nurse leader, two days a week still working at Brookside where I've been for ten years. So meeting with those folks and I, and identifying what their priorities are. You know, we've got big priorities that the health department wants. We've got this grant. But what are, what does every school nurse really want to see for the remainder of the school year? So these are some of the things that our nurse team has come up with and I'll be working, we'll, I'll be working together as a team to kind of accomplish some of these goals. So. Consistency across the district with like procedures. We want to make sure that we're all following, you know, similar guidelines and. Giving parents the same information no matter which school we're in, especially when you have a child in every, in three of the, you know, the schools, we want to all be consistent. Provider access for students. That's one of the challenges that we really noticed, especially this year. We have more students right now who don't have access to dental care. There is not a single dentist in the confines of our school district that accepts Dr. Dinosaur. And we have a significant number of students who are receiving state Medicaid and can't access dentists within our district. So we're working with, actually I met with someone from the Department of Health today to see if Plainfield Health Center will bring their bus. So they have a. They partnered with her on a McDonald House and have a bus that will travel. So we're really hoping that we can get that set up before the end of the year. We've also been doing some brainstorming with Vermont Technical College to see if their dental hygiene program could actually bring students that supervise. And then at least have someone take a peek at those little mouths that haven't seen a dentist in quite some time and don't have access right now. Emergency response was a priority for, for our nurse team, kind of making sure that our crisis planning is, excuse me. Is up where we'd like it to be, looking for some gaps, identifying those and then working with our partners across the, the district to improve some of that. Social determinants of health. Again, I think that goes back to this provider access and just the global challenges that we're having with. With medical care, accessing that, having an affordable, affordable housing, food and security. A lot of our schools. Have some programs to provide backpacks on the weekends. So how can we work as a nurse team to enhance that? So that's equitable across the district and that all students have access to programs like that. Sharing of ideas. One of our, our challenges with schools starting at different times is meeting together as a group. Our nurse team doesn't have, you know, an hour of time on either end of the day where we're all in school together. So. We're all kind of making a little bit of adjustment so that we can meet together and share some ideas. This grant is also helping us pay for some additional time outside of school hours. We've had two or three different nights where we've done some professional development together. So that's, that grant has, has supported that. Substance use concerns. Some of us have participated in some preventative meetings, collaborations with other schools. Last week I talked with some folks at U thirty-two. Williamstown and Northfield High Schools on what their schools are doing to help prevent substance use and then responding and, and getting folks referrals and. Activities that, that might reduce some of that use. The next slide shows a little bit of, I, what I don't want to, I don't want to call it a barrier, but. This is a number of visits that were in our offices since the beginning of the school year. I wrote, ran this report last Wednesday. In preparation for this. And you can see that, you know, our, our most highly populated schools are the ones with the most visits, Brookside and Harwood. And then Cross at Brook and, you know, it's pretty close to that. Warren Elementary has one student with some significant health needs. And so I think that's why. You know, theirs looks a little bit more elevated as compared to some of the other schools with similar student populations. So we're all, our group as a whole is looking at how we can still provide this direct care. To students and then still accomplish those other forty-something things under our, our. Our practice guidance that, that is necessary too. So. That just gives you kind of a little bit of an idea of what happens. And that's four thousand two hundred and fifty-nine encounters with kids at Brookside. So far this year that we've documented. Cross at Brook doesn't have a lot of that red because they actually just had the screener this week. So they're working on their screening this week. So don't think that. The cross is not doing their screenings. It's happening right now. So the nurse leader role, on the left-hand side, it's kind of things I've already accomplished so far. And then the right side are things that are ongoing. So we've. Been working on those and still have those as a remainder of the school year. I think I mentioned before, I've done, been in this role for twenty-seven days. Nine of those days I've been substituting in other schools where we haven't been able to find immediate. School nurse coverage. So I've worked as a school nurse now in all the schools except for Harwood. At this point, and kind of that's, it's actually been wonderful because then you can see the flow, know some of the students, understand some of the processes as you bring that back. Together. Some of the procedures that I've been working on, the communicable disease procedure in response to the policy, I think that was passed a few. Board meetings ago, updating our bloodborne pathogens exposure control plan, working on a naloxone policy. Or procedure, I'll use that word, not policy, animals in schools and then lice. Again, as a response to removing the policy and making sure that we have an updated procedure. The certifications, the part we've been doing some study groups and excited about when everybody's ready to take that exam. I think I've talked a little bit about already the medical provider outreach and the eight oh two smiles outreach is just the dental hygiene program. I've talked to four dental hygienists who right now won't commit to being a part of the program. It's, that's a challenge. So if anybody knows any dental hygienists who work part-time and are looking to make a little extra money, let me know. Happy to reach out to them and talk to them about the need that we have for the rest of the school year for sure. And then on the right-hand side, on some ongoing goals, continuing to monitor what's happening in the world of COVID. I think we're working on getting still some test kits out for folks that might need those. I did see an encouraging article this week in The Lancet that folks who have had COVID in the past or have updated on their vaccines, that. That immunity between both of those is really covering them and protecting them for up to forty weeks, which is incredible. So as we kind of move forward with this and understand more things, I think it's, it's promising moving forward with COVID being a part of our lives. Health-related staff education. We're working on professional development during in-service time for all of our staff to be uniform across the district. So. How do you respond to a food allergy? We want to talk to folks about how to making sure that everyone knows how to use an epinephrine injector. Everyone knows what to do in, in a medical emergency related to asthma, those sorts of things. And we want that education to be uniform. So work on that too. A district-wide orientation process. I was reflecting on how many school nurses now that we've mentored and trained in the last ten years or so. And just making sure that we have a procedure in place for the new folks who arrive. And here's a handbook for what. Nursing in the Harwood School District looks like. So having that, that process together. Additional procedure updates, delegating medications, the, the field trips. So I mentioned before, we just want to make sure that. Health needs are not being overlooked in planning for those sorts of things. Crisis prevention response and substance use. Again, I've spoken to both of those before, but those are some ongoing goals between now and, and June. And my main goal, my priority is to engage, encourage and empower the other school nurses, the other eight of them to be nurse leaders. And I may just want to mention I, some of the things that they're doing. So Beth Riley, who works at Brookside and Maggie Stone, who works here at Harwood. Have organized a community fair, health fair. They've recruited about twenty-five different community organizations to come to Brookside on Town Meeting Day. They've worked with the town of Waterbury to facilitate that. And so if you're out and about on Town Meeting Day and taking care of your voting in your town. And want to just come check that out. The idea is to have this replicated in other towns in the future and a way to bring the community into our schools. Clayton Wetzel, who's the nurse at Waitsfield, is involved in many, many professional leadership. Activities on the state and the national level. So I want to just shout out to him as well. Deirdre Finley, who's the nurse at Warren, just finished a public health course and wants to bring in some of the things that she's learned to our group. To share and, and build us up in that way. So there are a lot of leadership activities and a lot of really incredible school nurses across the district. So I'm really. Proud to be part of a, such a great team. So take questions.
Sure. So we've allotted twenty minutes for questions. So I'll. Hand the mic. Oh, yeah. So does anybody have any questions for Allison? Go ahead, Jess.
Quick question. When it comes to mental health, I know that among my peers, it's a very pressing issue. Are there any specific. You know, development courses or procedures that you might have implemented with these funds? Towards mental health?
Right now there's, oh, that's really, sorry. We haven't done any professional development specifically related to school health. School mental health, but that is certainly a priority. We have been working in some of our in-service days with our guidance counselors. So we had a, a job alike between the nurses and the guidance counselors to specifically address suicide ideation. So that has taken priority at this point, but I, we do recognize that that is a very. Large part of meeting the student needs and collaborating with our guidance counselors has been, you know, one of our priorities too.
I'll just ask the question about, it seems like Brookside has a lot more visits than, than other, other schools. More kids, I'm assuming, obviously, but are you tracking, I, I'm assuming you're tracking the reasons why and are there, are you looking at that data and then deciding? You know, work with families about that, you know, those sorts of issues.
I, I think that's one thing that our electronic health record has been phenomenal on. We, Beth and I actually spoke at the staff meeting on Tuesday. This past week with some of that information. The most common presentations in our offices are headaches and stomach aches. Every year it's been consistent for ten years. I can confidently say that's kind of the, the, the reasons as well. So what we have done in the past is present the data and then give the teachers an opportunity to help us figure out, you know, we don't really want to say this is what we should or shouldn't do. This is what we want you to do or not want you to do. We want the teachers to really come up with those solutions on their own. Monday, our school counselor was out as well. So we felt that because a lot of students have daily check-ins with her. And are experiencing some emotional challenges in the classroom and use us as a space, a safe space to come in and talk and take a break. So I do think that, you know, increased some of that too.
Lisa, did you, did you?
Thank you for coming in and giving us all this information. I'm curious about turnover in school nurses and I'm only like because the school that my kids attend, it seems like there's been a big turnover um in the last couple of years. And I'm just curious how like kind of much of a, you know, problem that is for, for the school nurse team as a district over time? Or if that was just kind of a blip?
I think it's, I don't think it's a blip. I do think that COVID was, uh, had a huge impact on us as um a team and our work um flow and our workload. So I think that was a factor in many folks leaving in the last uh three years um was related to some of that. I think um there is also some comparison to pay versus, you know, working where you're, you know, able to make within the school versus what you could make in a hospital setting. Uh, some of it is flexibility, um, you know, working full-time um in the school setting during the school hours versus working three twelve-hour shifts. You know, there's a lot of opportunities for school, for nurses in general um outside. And sometimes, you know, family changes, needs um are different, and I think that has contributed too. I do think that the one thing, and I think I'm, I'll speak for all of us in our district, I think our team is um fantastic, working together. We'll just, but I, I also don't think that we're unique in that um in the loss and the turnover. I think that there are, there are schools, actually now, two of the other eleven school districts who have this grant have open positions within their school district. Um, and so that nurse leader is fulfilling that role as a nurse that's missing, plus the leadership role. So um I think it's fantastic that we have our schools fully staffed right now too.
Anyone else? Just one second. Bobby?
The issue of dentists and Medicaid i- is a huge problem. And um the mouth is an easy place for germs to enter the body. And the plaque from, in the heart is often related to the plaque in your mouth. So I'm just kind of wondering what, you know, what, is there any effort or anything that can be done to try to get dentists to be willing to take at least a small percentage of Medicaid patients?
Um, the, the challenge that I understand from dentists is the reimbursement that is available from Medicaid. So I think that's a legislative uh priority we can certainly advocate. Um, I think all of us around the table can speak to their representatives to, to maybe make some changes um from that aspect. I do have a nursing student working with me at Brookside right now who was interested miraculously in dental care um for students. And so he put together this week a video that we're going to share with all of the primary schools on how to brush your teeth. So if you're interested, I'll share that with you too. He did a really nice job, so.
Go ahead, Life.
I love the idea of that, that video. We got our kids to brush their teeth much better when an older friend, kid friend of ours made a video for our kids. And they're like, no, it's cool to do it. She's like a teenager. Thank you so much for everything you presented and you're doing such great work and thinking about what nurses have been through, through the last few years. We just, you know, huge appreciation to you and the whole team. And glad you're, you're sticking with us. My understanding is the nurse, the lead nurse position is just through the end of this school year. So I guess I'm interested in just hearing, you know, I'm very concerned with COVID. I, you know, recently learned that twenty-twenty-two had the highest um death toll from COVID um in Vermont compared to twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty. So it's still very much present and I'm, you know, most worried about long COVID. Um, which it seems like there's new studies coming out all the time and it's very quickly evolving. So I guess my question is just whether the board can expect to hear something before the end of the, the lead nurse tenure? Either about the procedures that you said you're working on or some sort of um data-based update around just, you know, how, how things have gone in our district? Since I think the last time the board heard any data was a year ago or so. So just what might we anticipate?
I would love to come back um towards the end of the school year and kind of share um kind of what we've seen between from September maybe to December and then from December to the end of the school year with a couple of different data points. Visits, access, um, how the nurses felt supported, um, what sort of activities they were able to engage in as well. As far as COVID information, we're just collecting right now positive cases. We were collecting a significant amount of data the last few years based on trying to keep people in school. And so I, I can certainly share information on number of cases, um, because that's really all we're collecting right now. Because we are still required to report uh cases within the school to the state as a communicable disease.
Great. And, and procedures, is that something we're likely to hear about?
We're working on, I'm working with Shannon Wisdom on a way to organize all of those so they can be accessible, um, you know, to the group um for feedback. So the process that I'm using right now is collecting information from professional organizations, from other districts that are participating in this grant. What are other folks looking at and working on for procedures? And then giving our nurse team a chance to uh give feedback on that and modify that, review those with Mike and then move forward from there.
Any other first-time question people? Jasmine, you go right ahead.
I was wondering two things. Do we still look, do like the lice checks, like the chopsticks, kids' hair, does that still happen?
If your head itches at any point, Maggie will use the chopsticks on your hair.
Good, sounds good. It's not itching right now. But also, I was wondering with like the Narcan and Maxlone, um, are those like community-based endeavors where we're spreading the message of using that case of an overdose? Or is that student-based? I wasn't really sure what steps we're taking with that information.
Right now, we're working on having naloxone accessible um in all of our schools. So we'll start with the nurse team being able to administer that. So it would be um a, a nurse or someone coming to the nurse's office with concern that there was an issue or responding to a, a student who was not responsive or a, a community member for that matter. Um, and then working our way to maybe have the, the naloxone present with the AEDs around the school. So um right now our AEDs are accessible even when school's not in session. So for Town Meeting Day at Brookside, for example, that AED is located in a place where the community can access it if they're using the gym. So the idea eventually will be for us to have the naloxone with that AED so that anybody who's using our building can have access. Currently, anyone in the state of Vermont can get naloxone from a pharmacy um and do a couple of training videos. It's very easy to use, um, and it doesn't harm folks if you use it on someone who hasn't just, you know, experienced an overdose event. So, you know, we, while we haven't focused on campaigning that to say that teenagers, you can watch these videos and get it. We want it to be accessible to the community when they're using our building.
Any other questions, comments for Alison? Okay. Thank you so much for coming. That was really, that was really exciting to hear what you're doing. So next on our agenda is reflection. So as we put in the leadership report, um, we have four people who are not running for um school board reelection. So this would be an opportunity if any of you guys just want to say something or anybody, other board members would like to say anything. And then, go ahead, Lisa.
All right, I wrote something down because I knew that if I didn't, I would get home and feel like, wow, I really fumbled my way through that. So it's been a really interesting experience sitting at the board table. It's not something that I've ever done before, been part of a board. And I was reflecting on the experience and just realizing how like often the work can feel so frustrating because you get the sense or it lands in your body that you're either being like way too detailed in what we're discussing or we're way too broad. And we're rarely striking that balance that allows you to like leave a meeting and be like, all right, check that off the list, like, there we go. But looking back over it as like a three-year term, I'm able to kind of see all the progress that we made, all of the big decisions we made in a really thoughtful way where there were times that we were, you know, in the like hair-pulling minutia of it. And there were times that we're getting very kind of conceptual and, and um broad thinking. Um, and how that is really needed to come to um thoughtful solutions. And so I'm hoping that as I move forward in life, I'm able to bring that kind of lesson and understanding with me. As I think it applies to so many different areas of life. To the new board members that are sworn in in March, know that three years will fly by. You'll spend the first year just trying to figure out what's going on. The second, finding your place in areas of contribution. And the third, finally feeling confident in your abilities just in time for your term to end. I guess that's the reason they make it a three-year term. I joined when my youngest daughter was one and she was going to have her fifth birthday in May. So I, I really resisted um running for the board until the day that signatures were due. And then I panicked and decided if I was going to show up at the meetings anyway, I might as well have a vote. Thank you, Kristen, for encouraging me to do so. Um, I did it out of a passion for what was going on in our district at that time, and I'm really, really glad that I did. I think we've come a really long way. I feel really good about leaving the board in what feels like a really stable place. Um, and I have a lot of confidence in um both you, Dr. Mike and Lisa in um, in leading our, our district and wish you nothing but continued success. I've also really appreciated like literally every single one of you guys, students included, um, who've been at the board table with us. I think that everyone brings such a unique value. Um, and I really benefited from all the different viewpoints that have been shared. So thank you for, to everyone, the staff members, teachers, administrators, contractors, board members, volunteers, fellow parents. And importantly, the students that make this district a really wonderful place to raise and educate our kids. Thank you, guys.
Would anybody else like to say anything? Kim. So Kelly and I have come up with a few words to say, but everybody. So we would like to thank both Mike and Kim for stepping up to fill both of the vacant face-in seats. Making sure your town has full representation at the board table. Kim was appointed in April twenty-twenty-two and Mike in twenty, in June twenty-twenty-two as well. We are lucky to have such incredible and caring community members willing to share their time and knowledge. Even though both of you started partway through the current board session, you dove in, making sure you were up to speed with the current topics. So we wish both of you the very best and hope that you will still tune in and share your perspective. So thank you. Lisa. Um, we would like to say thank you to Lisa for your three years as the Moore Town Board Representative. When she began in twenty-twenty, we had just been advised to shut down schools and manage life fully remotely. While it was nothing like any of us have ever experienced and hopefully never again. Lisa continued to show up navigating this world as a new board member all the while, continuing to stay fully engaged, even if it was through Zoom. Lisa always comes to the board table with great questions, another way of looking at a topic and willing to dive in and doing the hard work needed. We will deeply miss the authentic and rich discussions that you raised while at the table. Feel free to reach out or attend a meeting in the future and let us know if you need a refresher on what the district's YouTube channel name is. On a more pers- on a more personal note, as the other Moore Town Representative, it's been an incredible journey serving alongside you for the last three years. Thank you for all you have done for our community. We would like to give our deepest thanks to Christine for volunteering her services to HUUSD since twenty-sixteen. Christine started her journey at the now HUUSD Board by first serving on the Waitsfield School Board. This led to being the vice chair of the Act Forty-Six Study Committee, where she helped write our governing documents. Christine became the chair of the HUUSD School Board at its inception and for the first few years after that. She has served on hiring committees as well as negotiations for both teachers, support staff and the executive facility committee. Christine's extensive, extensive knowledge, experience and understanding of how boards work, Robert's rules and the history of the district is nothing many, if not all of us have ever seen. We will surely miss your knowledge of back history, point of orders, and your dedication to work hard to ensure our district and operating at its fullest potential. Thank you for your service. It's going to look very different in March, so thank you guys very much. So we are getting towards the end of our agenda and moving right along. So our next thing is the consent agenda. We would be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda and we'll be bringing that suggested language up. Would anybody like to make that motion? Don't all jump at once, guys. Bobby will.
I can move it. I move to approve it.
Is there a second? Mike's excited. Um, any discussion? Okay, is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Not seeing any or hearing any, that motion will pass? Okay, so our last thing is communication. So it looks like Jake, Jake is going to be the writer. We would need an editor. If nobody wants to do it, I can edit. Oh, what? Okay. Life will do it.
Yes, and can I ask a question about communications? Um, I'm just remembering that the um Central Vermont Career Center presentation, there was a big emphasis on something showing up on the um, a town meeting that people haven't seen in the past, right? The CBCC budget. And I remember her saying like, you know, do what you can to message this and communicate with the district or with your community. So I just wanted to, that's kind of a stretch probably that that's falls under this communications. But anyway, I did, I just.
We can, we could put something in about it under um voting, like a voting headline. Something, I mean, we can do that with our people. Go ahead, Lisa. Oh, the other thing too is can I make a suggestion as well? That we also put in communication to, that you can request, you need to, if you're going to, to request your budget ballot. Are people cool with that, calling your town clerk and asking, requesting about? It's not going to be mailed to everybody. People good with that? Go ahead, Lisa.
Would maybe you suggest that we consider two different posts? So do a normal like board recap and then another separate communication that goes to the front porch forum specifically on voting stuff. So that could be about um both the career center and kind of how you get your ballots. I think it'd be really helpful.
So do you guys want to do, do both of the things? And I can help to kind of give. No, so what you would do is you would do it like the Google Doc and then we'll send it to like Shannon Wisdom at the office, central office, and she'll post it. Does that sound okay?
If you help.
Yes, is that? I think we can probably, I don't think it has to be super long either. So you guys, okay. Okay, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be fine. It's fine. That's like my go-to phrase. It's fine. It's fine. Kelly?
Card for uh Central Vermont was sent out.
Okay, that was, came out a while ago. Yeah, it wasn't recent. Yeah, ours came out. I got, so the vote thing from our district, I received mine in the mail a couple of weeks ago. Anybody else receive theirs? Okay. Yeah. The white card that said vote, we had approved, yep, okay. There any, so we're going to do one board recap communication. The second one will be one specific for front porch forum with voting information. Cool. Okay, so if there's nothing else and I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry, one other timeout, one other thing is if you are not going to be, if you are not going to Zoom or come in person to the annual meeting, please email Kelly and I. We need to make sure we have a quorum and there'll be certain motions that people will be given. So please just, no, that is March sixth, the day before town meeting. So if you, you can attend via Zoom, but please email us if you're not going to be able to attend. Okay. I'd be looking at motion. Okay, second. Any discussion, objection to leaving? Any discussion, objection to leaving?
I, 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 I will just make a note that I looked at the closings. There's a very long list of school closings. So there may be. I'm very, I'm very disappointed, Jasmine. But I would say based on what I'm seeing, I think you will probably see something yet tonight.
Any objection to adjourning?
No.
Okay, so you guys uh on the sixth.